Well, good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call to order this Tuesday study session of the Pierce County Council. It is Tuesday, Halloween, October 31st, 2023, and the time is 12:01 PM. All members are present except for Vice Chair Campbell and Councilmember Morrell, who we do expect very shortly. Item number two today is a review of today's council meeting agenda. Ms. Long, to brief on what's different from what you briefed yesterday?
All right, thank you. So this is this afternoon's amended agenda. We did review the consent agenda yesterday. I think there might be one additional item under certified budgets. And then, under Section Six Messages from the Executive, I believe there was one additional ordinance added that he has signed. So unless you have questions on those items, I'll move ahead. Okay. Section Seven Proclamations, we have the proclamation designating the month of November as Native American and Alaskan Native Heritage Month in Pierce County. And Councilmember Herrera will be reading that one today. Moving to Section Eight Ordinances, we have four items here. First is 2023-56, and this is declaring the old settler cemetery property as surplus on Halloween and authorizing the executive to transfer this to the city of Lakewood. This received a due pass at rules on October 9th. Next is 2023-62. This is amending Chapter 2106 of the Code entitled Purchasing. This was forwarded without recommendations at rules on October 9th, and there is one amendment to this. Next is 2023-67. This is adopting new Chapter 2111 of the Code Notice of Funding Availability Process. This received a due pass at rules on October 23rd. There's one amendment to this proposal as well. And then finally, you have 2023-68. This is adding a new Community Needs Fund. There's one amendment that would make that into a program. And this received a due pass at rules on October 23rd. And those are your agenda items for this afternoon's meeting.
Thank you. And we'll revisit the amendments that will be in front of council this afternoon. As we did have a pretty hurried conversation yesterday before our special meeting with the Pierce County Legislative Delegation. Are there questions for Ms. Long before we turn to the amendments? Not seeing any. Ms. Murray, you presented in a chart that helps summarize the detail. The detail is in legal form in our packet. Perhaps we ask you to go through it one more time since we did have a somewhat hurried conversation yesterday trying to get to an 11:30. I don't, so please use your discretion in summarizing and what we'll see if we've generated any further consequences.
Okay. So, good afternoon. Julie Murray, Chief of Staff. So I'm going to begin with 2023-62, which is relating to purchasing. And what you have before you is an amendment being offered by Councilmember Morrell, which was to make some changes to what your original version was. Just to set some of the background, to understand that the county charter requires that professional services be advertised and written proposals submitted. But the dollar limit that you place on that process is one entirely determined by this legislative body. There is no state law that dictates it. However, with public works and goods, materials and supplies, there are state law requirements that the county must abide by. And so what the First Amendment does is it says for goods and public works is that the county will follow the applicable limit for Pierce County. For services, current law is generally set that a contract for services that is less than $5,000 may be procured directly with a vendor. If the dollar limit is 5,000 to 25,000, you must contact three vendors for proposals. And if it's over 25,000, then a full request for proposal process must be, must be performed. What the amendment would do is change those limits to 25,000 or less to be able to contract directly with a vendor between 25 and $49,999. You can use the shorter process of contacting three vendors for proposals for that, securing that service. And then if it's over 50,000, that's when the requirement to advertise a request for proposal would occur. It also allows for sole source contracting of services. That's currently allowed for goods and goods, materials and supplies. I believe the county's practice has been to do sole source contracting for services. But I think through this process, we recognize that that area needs clarification. And so that's also included in this proposal. And then also, the, both the original and the amendment would exempt the hearing examiner's contracts from the procurement process and that that could be done as a sole source. So I'm happy to answer any questions members have about this ordinance.
This amendment being brought forward by Councilmember Morrell, you were in lots of conversation with the Finance Department and the Deputy Prosecuting Attorney to produce it. Would that be an accurate statement?
Yes.
And fully compliant with the county charter, state law and state constitution?
As far as I know, yes. And I would also mention, I, I believe that everything that you pass is presumed to be constitutional until told otherwise.
Very important point. Questions about Amendment One being brought forward by Councilmember Morrell? Let's see, any? Let's go to the Notice of Funding Availability Bill and corresponding amendment. Ms. Murray?
So again, just to set some of the context, currently, most of the programs and funds that go through a request for proposal process are distributing monies in excess of 50,000 because that is the current, I'm sorry, 25,000, because that is the current limit within the procurement code. Although the council has passed many of these programs saying that expenditures are subject to the approval about the, by the council, we received recent legal advice that the council lacks the authority to really revise the list that come from the request for proposal process. And that is something that is currently in Pierce County Code. It is not a state law requirement, nor is it a charter requirement. Again, the charter only requires that proposals be advertised and that written proposals be sought. But how you deal with the information thereafter is one that the code determines and therefore this legislative body determines. What 2023-67 would do is create a separate process called the Notice of Funding Availability so that we would have a process separate and apart from the RFP process that would be used when you, as the council, determine by ordinance that it would be used for that particular program or fund. It will require advertisement and written proposals to make sure that it is in, comports with the charter. It will still require the department and any applicable advisory group to score and rank applications. As originally provided, the ordinance would have allowed the council to revise the list that comes before it for recommended funding to address geographic diversity, district equity or council funding priorities. The amendment that you have before you today would first require that the council receive the scoring and ranking recommendations of any applicable advisory committee. This scoring, ranking and recommendations of the department before executive review. And then you would have the final set of recommendations that occur after the executive review. Under the amendment, the council would be allowed to either accept all recommendations brought forward, reject all recommendations and request that a new Notice of Funding Availability be issued or allow it to revise the recommendations. But that revision is subject to the limitation that the council may only add one entity per 10, the range of 10 eligible applications, so you could add to the list and that you could proportionally reduce the funding to those on the list by up to 10% to generate new funding for those added entities. Under the amendment, if new appropriated funding becomes available and that would be that the list, for some reason, does not get fully expended due to a contract may, may not come to fruition or that, you know, the contract is less, less than what is required, that if the new appropriated funding that is available is less than 10, I'm sorry, less than $100,000, then the department could make new awards, increase existing awards from the current pool of application and bring that before the council for review. If it was over $100,000, then they would just advertise a new Notice of Funding Availability. Added to the program from the amendment, due, this is part of the amendment, is that all agreements must contain the standard terms and conditions applicable to county agreements or contracts for similar services and purchases, that the funding must generally be distributed on a reimbursable basis. And then, except for contract limits, the old RFP laws, distributions must conform to any applicable federal, state or local laws. And I'm available for questions.
Question about Councilmember Morrell's Amendment One, you just noticed the funding availability bill. What's over here?
Thank you, Chair. I'm thinking of some of the situations, the last budget where this came up in conversation and maybe even the, the first year I was here, kind of before, when we were doing budget amendments. Sometimes there was reserve dollars or additional funds that were available. And I'm trying to understand, so if we bump up an amount, how does that work with this amendment? If we said there were additional dollars available or is that no longer an option at all with all of these changes?
So if there were additional funding available, let's say, for example, using the pasta account, okay? If, you would first have to do that new appropriation. And if that amount were less than $100,000, the option would be for the department to use existing applications to then distribute that new appropriation. Because then appropriated funding is available. If it's over $100,000, it would go out for a new NOFA, a new request for funding availability.
Okay, because the two situations, I think, just kind of thinking back, and I don't remember what funds they were, but one was, we basically, we had enough in reserve that we said, no, go ahead and move it, move them all to the full, like allocation, because some had been partial allocations. So as the council, we said, we have the funds, let's do it all. This is what they asked for. This is, and so I think we've done that. And then the second one was where we, there was a waitlist and there were additional dollars. And we asked to add a project, or the two situations that I can remember. And then there's other little ones, but those are the big ones. So those would be, you would still go out for an RFP if it was over $100,000, do the whole process again.
Right. It's a whole process again if it's that large amount, you know? It doesn't mean that the people who were on the prior list can't reapply for those additional fundings, but you couldn't direct and say, this, this entity gets X more and, or, you know, or Y. You couldn't, like, manipulate the list in that way. But if you did have a smaller dollar amount, you could say, okay, now we're appropriating that funding. It's under 100. Department come back with how you would, what kind of list would you do without having to do the entire application process? It would be amongst that current pool.
Okay.
The one thing I, I'll just mention that I think it would eliminate that has been sort of the past practice, maybe of the council, is doing a direct appropriation of those funds, even if that entity were to be otherwise eligible or have, was an applicant on the list. Because this is going to be something that becomes connected to the, to the NOFA process. And what you've done in the past is really use general procurement law, you know, to do a direct appropriation. So I think that is something that the council's done in the past that you wouldn't be able to do anymore.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
This, um, this also is with a set appropriation amount that the council sets. And, and we have to say which funds will, will trigger this NOFA process. If through the biennial budgeting process, you took funds off the top to do something in partnership with the Health Department, let's say, that does not have to go through the NOFA process. If you, if you determine that there were enough funds in fund balance in a fund and you wanted to appropriate those funds, either directly in some cases or, or through a competition, that, do you?
I don't, I don't agree, agree with that. Because if you were actually, I guess we would have to look at how you connect the program to the NOFA process. Because the, being able to do those direct appropriations is because you're using the general procurement service limits. And if you divorce the program from that ability and just say it's a NOFA, your ability to just do off the top, I think, is actually no longer allowed.
Then we have a problem?
Okay. How would we pay for therapeutic costs would be?
Yeah, how do we pay for therapeutic costs?
That's not a procurement. That's an actual, just paying for a service within, that's appropriating those monies for county things. I'm talking about when you're doing appropriate, direct appropriations to third parties.
Well, we'll, yeah, we'll huddle. There's, the scenarios matter. And this whole process is frustrating. Vice Chair Campbell?
So, two questions. Had brought this up to Councilmember Morrell yesterday, and I don't know if this got into any changes in the amendments we're seeing today. But if a request, we get a whole list of organizations to fund, one of them's on the front page of the paper for the CEO's just been arrested for fraud. We either have to accept and fund it and then let the process play out and it gets canceled later, or we have to kick the whole process back.
Yeah, there's nothing that's changed in the amendment to address that situation.
So, we, as elected officials, would be forced to fund bad organizations or kick the whole process back. We can't remove one out because new information has come to light.
You have no ability to remove an entity from the list.
Okay. Um, scenario we've been working on with senior centers. So, comes back, we put out 500,000, there's $800,000 in requests. Committee does good work, ranks everyone. Currently, we couldn't go back in and say, okay, look, there was obviously a lot more need than we put out. Let's, you know, everyone got allocated pretty steeply to where it's going to be hard for the ones we did fund to not do their job. Some got left off that we really should have funded. We can't just bring in allocations and kind of make everyone whole. What we would have to do is send out another, say, $300,000 or $200,000, send it back to the committee and they would make a new set of recommendations. And given that, and I know many of us have received emails from senior centers that only got about half their allocation saying, I don't know if we can work with this. We couldn't guarantee that the funding would go to someone who wasn't funded before but could very well just get spread among the other people who got allocated. And so even if our hope was that an unfunded senior center got funding, we would have no control over that because the committee could then recommend to fully fund the ones they didn't fully fund before.
So just under the amendment, the only ability you have to change it is by adding entities?
That, that applied.
That, that apply. And that number is only one for the range of 10 applicants. So again, and if there are new monies, if you're, if it's under 100,000, again, it goes back to the department and that applicable advisory committee. They can make new awards, they can increase existing awards. But you're right, if it's over 100,000, it would go out to a new Notice of Funding Availability. Those entities could still apply, but no one is guaranteed the outcome.
And no matter how much we wanted, organize, you know, the senior center X to get funded, it's up to the committee to where it goes.
Through the NOFA process. That's why you have Community Needs, which is the next ordinance.
Thank you.
I want to have more conversation when we break about how this interacts with the biennial budgeting process. But let's move on to the Community Needs Fund.
Okay. So, ordinance 2023-68 would create a Community Needs Fund. This proposal is intended to address some of the situations that have been discussed that it, prior practice had been the council would provide direct appropriations, primarily the county current expense, miscellaneous current expense, or the county general fund, however you term that. And the recent advice from the, the DPAs, the Deputy Prosecuting Attorneys, is that those direct allocations are subject to the county's current contract limits. So we're going back to the five, $5,000 direct allocation, the five to 25 or over 25,000 that we need to go out under a request for a proposal process. What the amendment would do is it would create the Community Needs Fund Program. So it would no longer be a special revenue fund as the original ordinance had proposed. However, the uses of the monies for the program would range the same. It would be allowed to distribute funding to businesses, organizations or public entities for the provision of community goods, services or programs aimed at improving the quality of life of Pierce County residents. The amendment would add a overall cap of the amount that may be appropriated for the program at $3.5 million per biennium. Eligible entities are those that are located in Pierce County or doing business in Pierce County. And the funding may not exceed 75,000 a fiscal year or 150,000 a fiscal biennium. All grant, all, all funding must be distributed through a, an agreement that demonstrates the public benefit in exchange for the funds. And the amendment would also add, as currently in the prior proposal, the requirement that those agreements contain standard terms and conditions applicable to county agreements or contracts for similar services or purchases, that funding must generally be distributed on a reimbursable basis. And, and except for the contract limits that we originally discussed, distributions must conform to all applicable federal, state and local laws. And I'm open for questions on this ordinance.
Questions about the amendment, Councilmember Morrell's bringing it forward here. Not seeing any. Thank you, Ms. Murray. And I'm not seeing any other questions about today's council meeting agenda. So that's going to move us on to item three, external boards and commissions. Mr. Taylor, is there anything to start us off with?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's be real quick. So you do have a meeting of the Growth Management Policy Board this week, November the 2nd, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. There aren't any action items on the agenda for that meeting. There are a number of discussion items, so that I think are of interest to the council. And those include the report on monitoring of the 2023 housing, housing efforts at PSRC, an update on the industrial lands analysis, regional industrial lands analysis, and then updates on the monitoring of the performance of the regional growth centers. So those are the three items for discussion. That's all you have this week at the PSRC.
Any questions on that? Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any other boards or commission updates from other members? I'll update briefly that the South Town Housing Affordability Partners Board is set to meet this Friday. And there were two main presentations and discussions. The first is a discussion with some experts on affordable and workforce housing projects and how they are financed, how they're traditionally financed. So allowing the SHAPE Board to go a little deeper in understanding how affordable housing and workforce development projects are financed in the real world. And then the second conversation is a conversation about SHAPE creating a housing capital fund. The SHAPE manager has been engaging especially smaller communities about the status of creation of a SHAPE Housing Capital Fund. So in some cases, this is some jurisdictions that have their own 1400s, Hospital 1406 fund allocation as an example. They might want to pool those funds or perhaps other resources they might have to pool resources to have a affordable housing capital fund and enabling smaller jurisdictions to pool resources to do that. So several, several smaller mid-sized communities in Pierce County have been having that conversation with SHAPE and using SHAPE as a forum to, to do that. So that's what's on the SHAPE agenda. Not seeing any other hands at this time. So we're going to move on to Chair's topics. And one item here, we've invited Director Moss to have further conversation with council. We had conversation together last week about the Youth Violence Prevention Allocation Advisory Committee and some concerns that have come to light about one of the entities, Safe Streets, that is not being recommended for funding as they went through the allocation advisory committee process. And as council has been informed, I think the, the information used by the allocation advisory committee seems to have been erroneous in terms of what was, at the end of the day, used to make that decision. And so there's been lots of, lots of communication with council about the impact of this decision on Safe Streets in particular. And council's options as of right now are to fund the list as presented or deny the list and ask the department to reissue the RFP with the new information that's come to light. And so before council makes that decision, we want to have more conversation with the department director to understand, to, to understand what's going on and to have more conversation about the path forward. So Director Moss, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Chair Mello, and members of the council. My name is Heather Moss. I'm the Director of Human Services for Pierce County. I regret that I wasn't here last week when you had that conversation. I was out of the country, so I'm glad to have another opportunity to talk with you about this today. What I want to start out with saying is that our process is not flawed. You have seen us go through this process of soliciting applications, reviewing those applications, doing our fiscal risk assessments over hundreds of times the last few years. This process, I would argue, is no different than all of the processes we've done over the, over that time with different fund sources and different results. What I will say is that when you put out a competitive bid process, there are ultimately winners and losers in that process. We choose not to fund providers for a lot of different reasons. What I think is unique about this situation is that we collectively, and I think specifically you heard from one of our advisory board members, shared a little bit more detail than I think we would normally share about the reasons why we would not fund one particular provider. So I think for, from that perspective, we do owe Safe Streets an apology for the amount of information that we shared. But again, I, I stand by the process that we used to make those funding allocation decisions. Just, and I see this as two different processes, two, two different issues, if that's not clear. The, the process that we used and then the characterization of the conclusions regarding that one provider. So if I, if I could, I just want to share a little bit of, more of an overview of the process. As you are aware, we put out a Notice of Funding Availability for the youth violence dollars as we do every year in the spring. That went out in March. We received applications back at the end of March. Those were internally reviewed and by our advisory committee reviewed in April and May. The allocation advisory committee met in June to make their initial assessments and collect their information. Those were then provided to me and to Executive Dan Meyer. And then we notified council and about mid-July, I believe it was, that we had preliminary recommendations. All very straightforward. And as I've said, the process is, is pretty typical of what we do in all of our, in all of our Notice of Funding Availability. In this particular one, we received 28 applications totaling about $2.5 million. We were, the, the list in front of you for consideration is contemplating or is recommending awards for 24 of those 28 applications. So four of them were not funded. Safe Streets is one of those. The 24 awards total one point, almost 1.4 million. So it's substantially less. I'd say it's about 60% of the total that was requested. So again, reiterating that fact that there are providers who either didn't receive as much as they asked for or didn't receive any funding at all. The other piece I want to point out about the process is that, as you've heard a little bit over the, over time, we do a financial risk assessment as part of our analysis of the individual providers asking for funding. That risk assessment is, happens in parallel with the Notice of Funding Availability. And we ask for a series of documents from the organization. For this particular NOFA, we had 28 risk assessments. And summary of those risk assessments was provided to the allocation advisory committee. Nine of the 28 were characterized as high risk. And why I think that's important for you to know is that high risk in and of itself does not preclude us from making a recommendation to fund an organization. In fact, I believe it was In fact, I believe it was six of the twenty-four that were funded were characterized as high risk. That's a high risk based on the financial information that we see, and that presents a mitigation opportunity, is how I would characterize it, for the department. So when we go into a contract relationship, we use that financial risk assessment to determine what our expectations are within that requi, in that, within that contract. And it also impacts how we monitor those individual providers. So the risk assessment is done. There are high, medium, and low, or I'm sorry, it's high, moderate, and low risk. And in this instance, we had nine assessed at high risk, as I said, four, I believe, at moderate, and then the remainder were at low risk. I think that's all I have to share with you about the process, in particular to this particular NOFA. Again, I will characterize that the, the way that we presented the information to you when it, or to the Human, Health and Human Services Committee on October third, third, I think provided a little more detail than was appropriate to share, frankly, in a public setting. The Safe Streets application was not dismissed solely based on that high-risk assessment. It was scored fairly and in comparison to all of the other twenty-seven applications that we received. And they fell in that bottom third of the applications that we received based on those scores. So the, the way that it was characterized as there being a direct tie between their risk assessment and their scoring and the decision to fund them or not fund them was not completely accurate. That's what I'm, that's what I have to, to present to you today, but I imagine you have a few questions.
We do think.
I think I'm ready.
Thank you. We do. The information that has come forward to correct the record about Safe Streets audit and risk, now that the department has that information, would they change the risk assessment for Safe Streets?
So our risk assessment evolves every year for every organization as we get new information. So yes, my understanding is based on the final audit that we, audit report that we have for Safe Streets. They are in, they're determined as a low-risk assessment at this point in time. Yes.
And when the Allocation Advisory Committee was here presenting in committee, they presented in the public hearing that the only reason why, I, I, I went and re-listened to the tape, the only reason why they were not recommended for funding is because of the risk assessment. They scored really high, they performed really well, that, that's what they attested to.
I think that's not quite an accurate reflection of what she said. I believe she said that the, it was but for their, their risk assessment that they would have scored higher, but that was not, that was not a deciding factor. So I guess there's two different things going on there. One is that there's a, there was a totality of scoring that was above and beyond the risk assessment that caused Safe Streets to fall low in that list of rankings. And that was not communicated to you accurately. And the other is that there is not a, again, we have some that are characterized as high-risk that received funding. So that's not, you can't necessarily equate high-risk with not getting funding or, or the staff or the department determining that a high-risk means that they're automatically disqualified from funding. So I think it was misrepresented to you.
Do other members have other questions? Council, we need to determine if we're going to ask the department to go back. Now that we have the updated information from Safe Streets, now that we've had the benefit of discussing more with the director and getting follow-up information from the department. Fisher Campbell.
Why paused on? The question I was going to ask is what do we do now? Now you put that for us. I understand what you say, but that may not been what was meant, but that's what came across. And in fairness, I think we need to go back and do it again. Because I think that when I, what I heard in the committee, what I heard, even if it was nuanced, slightly different, was we didn't even really consider them. We looked at the risk assessment and we stopped.
That's what I heard. That's what I heard in the public hearing as well.
And so there's at least an appearance of not a fair process. And what I'm hearing is, well, it's fairer than it appeared, but as elected officials, we deal in the appearance of, the appearance of a conflict, an appearance of impropriety, an appearance of not a fair process. And we can argue a lot that, no, no, it was all there, but the appearance has already happened in the best way to, I believe, ensure confidence in our committees in, in this process of asking committees to fairly consider people and fairly bring them to us. And since we're limited to up or down vote, I, I, I think that it, it has to go back. And it may yield a similar result, but I think that, that would be the fair way to do it.
Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you. I concur with Councilmember Campbell. I think if there is any doubt in the minds of people, and I am sure there is doubt in the minds of Safe Streets about whether this was a determining factor in their award, then I think we owe it to them to go back and, and let them have a fair shot at this. Like Councilmember Campbell said, the result may be exactly the same, but I think they will feel like they got a fair, fair shot at these dollars. And having worked for nonprofit organizations for over twenty years, something like this would be devastating. The loss of these funds would be devastating to their program. And if they felt like it was a result of some misinformation out there, that would be really hard to take. But if it's the result of, and they're confident that it's, it's the result of a fair assessment, then, then they can live with it, I'm sure. Thank you.
We don't take this decision lightly at all, hence the lots of time we're, we're spending thinking about this and asking for the director's time. So we, we take this very seriously. Also, the, the resulting action and recommendation has had some unintended consequences on Safe Streets' reputation, and they've expressed that really clearly to us. It's really serious for them. Councilmember Monroe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I apologize for getting in here on the conversation a little bit late. I, I don't know if I'm really in favor of going back out. You know, if, if we're talking what's fair and what's not fair. Those that went through the process to delay it is not fair to them. I understand Safe Streets' position. It seems like that somehow communication broke down. I'm not here to point fingers at anyone, but we always hear the frustration of one thing that led to not making the cut on, on these all the time. And I feel for Safe Streets, but I'm not, I, I don't think I'm willing to make staff do extra work and to delay the process. So that's where I'm sitting at. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Monroe. Director Moss, I wanted to, in, in this, I wanted to ask about a potential process to cure issues. Maybe this example, your, your contracting staff are doing the risk assessments, analyzing information. So this might be an example. There's, there's countless examples your staff deals with to. Another example, I think, that has come up recently is, you know, a, a, an agency, a, a provider responds to an RFP, whether they're a, you know, teeny-tiny organization working on a shoestring budget or all-volunteer organization, or they're a super sophisticated organization with hundreds of staff. Whatever it is, sometimes people respond to an RFP and forget an attachment or don't have all their attachments, or maybe missing an attach, or they have the wrong attachment when they're responding. Many people would consider that a technicality. Everything else is in there. They make the case. They put the, they put the wrong outcomes attachment in the package. You can feel, you can feel for a all-volunteer organization who messes up like that, trying to fumble their way through a complicated process. I, I feel for all volunteer organizations and smaller organizations especially, trying to navigate government funding. The question is, when these kinds of examples present themselves, we have the Safe Streets example of, we have a, your staff is reading an audit, maybe they misread it. They want to understand, what does that really mean? What, what was there of? Is there an issue? Has this been resolved? Is your nine ninety in? Whatever the questions might be. Is there a process to cure questions like that so that y- your team can write an accurate risk assessment or make sure they have all the documents in place that, that still preserves, you know, the integrity of the process and the fairness of the process? Is there a process to cure step in your process? If not, should we make sure you get one?
Thanks for the question. There's a lot of nuances to what you just presented or posed. The, the, an easy answer in specific to this example is one of the things that ended up in the financial risk assessment, particularly to Safe Streets, was an indication that they had not submitted their nine nineties to the IRS or filed their nine nineties for the last few years. What we know, what you might all know and what I've recently learned is that the IRS is woefully behind in posting their nine nineties to a public website. So that is not always the most reliable location. So I believe that some of our staff and our fiscal staff are looking in other locations, but that's something that we're going to make sure that we do more thoroughly is looking at other sources like GuideStar or the provider's own website to identify their nine ninety. So that's an example of a specific improvement that I would suggest we make around this particular instance.
And I would submit the United States Congress not defunding the IRS so that they have the capacity to do that kind of work would be a good thing, but I have to respond to that. There's an active debate going on in the United States Congress. Go ahead.
More generally, your question just about the, how do we resolve the issue of mom and pop, or in your words, these small nonprofit-driven organizations who might inadvertently submit something that's incomplete. I would pose that that is sort of antithesis to a competitive, a fair competitive process. So the options that we have are a direct allocation where we think that competition, competition is not valid or a formula where we think a comp, formula-based funding, where we think a competition is not necessary, but where we determine collectively as a county that competition is important because of a scarcity of dollars and sort of an inability to differentiate between organizations, sort of at first glance or by definition, right? A competitive process is required. When you make the decision that a competitive process is required, then you are bound to make that as fair as possible. And, and the way that we are interpreting, and I believe that procurement laws are meant to be interpreted, is that that means we put out a procurement request that, or NOFA, that says these are all the things that you have to provide and answer, and you have until four thirty on Thursday to do that. If someone forgets, it's hard for us to assume intent around that. So it's, it, it just gets slippery real fast, right? About, oh, well, they didn't mean to miss that, or, oh, they, they meant to attach this thing and they attached the wrong thing. And it's just, I think it gets really messy real fast and opens us up to not only litigation, but credibility about our competitive bid process. So I would suggest that. One, one way to mitigate that outside of the allocation process is to help build the skill sets of our nonprofit community. And we've talked a lot about that and continue to have conversations with partners around what the county's role is in doing that and what some of our partners can help us do to build capacity, build awareness, so that providers get to a point where they are able to compete in a competitive process. So I'd, I'd say that's shifting the focus a little bit. I think that's where we need to go as an organization, is thinking about how to build that capacity overall rather than individually helping compensate within a specific NOFA process.
It's helpful to hear. Fisher Campbell.
I can appreciate using the completeness of an application as part of the weeding out process. But our goal is to get the best organizations. Reminded of when I had my business and we were hiring for a new position and we looked at a, you know, gotten in several resumes and we were considering, and an employee was reading back over and goes, why didn't you consider this person? Turns to me and the manager, and we both looked at the top line and there was an error. We're like, oh, she made an error at the top. It's like, yeah, but did you read the rest of it? We're like, no. And we read it, was highly qualified, ended up hiring her. Ended up being one of the best employees I ever had, which taught me the lesson of, don't let technicalities prevent you from getting the best that you can. Our goal is to get the dollars to the best organizations. And I hate to think that the best organization might have gotten kicked out because they had the wrong attachment when we could have just given a cursory look and said, you know, the attachment that you sent doesn't really match up with what you were requested to send. Not evaluating the content of it for whether it'll score high or low or like, oh, God, you should rewrite this because it's going to score low, but it's just the wrong document attached. Our goal is to get the best organizations and to have this, to, to, to have arbitrary reasons to kick out. I, I know that makes the job easier because you're thinking among fewer, and, you know, you only have eight instead of ten to, to evaluate. But I don't know if that's our best outcome for our organization. So I, I would encourage us to maybe, you know, if we're willing to look that deep and to going and researching their nine nineties everywhere and go to all these websites, I would encourage us to have someone review it for completeness. Now, and maybe it's, if you get it in twenty-four hours before the deadline, then we will review it for completeness if you submitted at one minute to the deadline. Sorry. But at least, or just allow them to call and say, hey, did I get you everything you needed? Oh, no, you're missing, you're missing the link to the nine ninety on your website. Okay, here it is. For completeness, not for content. And so it, it just seems to me we want the best outcomes. And that means that we make sure that we have the widest pool of applicants, not find arbitrary reasons to win or win down. My thoughts personally. Thank you.
Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you. I have a little bit of a different perspective. I was a grant writer for a long time, and I would always tell people there is really no special skill in being a grant writer other than you have to be able to write and you have to be able to follow instructions. And I would write grants to foundations and I would write grants to the federal government. And I looked over my checklist five hundred times before I sent it off because I knew if I was missing one stupid little form, whether I thought it was important or not, I was going to lose out on that opportunity. So I appreciate the fairness that comes from making sure these things are submitted on time. We've talked about maybe making the time a little bit more consistent across so that organizations just don't have to, make it easier for them to, to get it right. Having checklists, I'm sure you already have that. I do like Councilmember Campbell's idea. Maybe there is, maybe there's some retired nonprofit leaders who'd be willing to be our, a mentor or review so that if somebody submitted it a, a day in advance, a couple of days in advance, this is completely voluntary. You know, Joe, retiree, would be willing to look through it for them and, and then kick it back and give suggestions. I mean, that goes to building the capacity that you talked about, Director Moss. Something like that would help the organization, but still retain the fairness. Because, I mean, I, I agree, you, you have to be, I think, you have to be consistent. And, and, and it trains these organizations too, as they grow, to be able to apply for bigger grants because they know that following those instructions is, is just paramount. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. And this is just very unusual. I, I just, I want to concur with the, if someone doesn't get some- if someone doesn't get something submitted, and it was just a human error, no one's perfect, and I always can appreciate allowing that to be let in. However, I'm just, I'm sensing something else beyond just the, the finding on the audit, and that, I guess in my view, I would rather leave the discretion up to the committee that chose these, that they had more knowledge than what we do here. And I want to give grace and respect to that group and the decisions that they made, that there's more to it than what we're just hearing here. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Merrill.
Thank you. I won't belabor the point, but, you know, I, as has been stated, I mean, there's, there's guidelines that are installed, and we have to follow that from a procurement fairness standpoint. I know, being a commercial contractor, you know, when I go out and put my bid packages together, I have to follow what the scope of work is and the process of which I was given. I've lost quite a few bids, even though I was the low bid, because I didn't meet one of the requirements, insurance, didn't have the proper insurance. So, you know, bad on me for doing that. I accept responsibility for that. Is it, did I think it was fair at the time? Sure, I could have adjusted my insurance. But there again, I didn't meet the stated guidelines that everyone who put in a bid had to abide by, and they couldn't show favoritism to me, even though I was a low bid. So, you know, I, I, I'm sensitive to this, but, you know, I understand that your book of business is your book of business, and you should know what your book of business is when you're submitting for these programs. So small, big nonprofits, you know, started out as a one-man dog and pony show, and I had to learn on the fly. But there again, I learned, and, you know, did I make mistakes? Yeah. Did I lose bids and thought that I was getting close to the edge of the financial cliff? Yes. But there again, you, you learn, you understand, you move forward, or you go out of business. So I guess that's all I'm going to say on that. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I, I think what some of us are trying to raise is, it's one thing for a for-profit entity who's building a road, or a sidewalk, or building a commercial building to not comply, and the next building contractor will get the bid, or the next warehouse contractor will get the bid. There's many of those, no offense, there's, there's many of those. I think the, who's harmed here when we use a theory of like perfection for completeness of a grant application, who's harmed here is, is the community, and often, often marginalized communities, and historically underrepresented communities. That's who's harmed. The, the, maybe the, yeah, the nonprofit might get harmed, because it might make payroll harder for a few months, and of course, the nonprofit will be harmed. But the, the community they're serving is who I'm most concerned about, and who gets harmed by technicalities. And I get, we're, I raised the conversation about an opportunity to cure for completeness, not content, in the spirit of what standard we're, we're using, because of who's, who's harmed when we, when we, when we make the really serious decision to say, no, you, you can't further compete, that has a direct impact to who they are, what population they are trying to serve, who from my estimation is often historically marginalized. Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Chair, and we'll weigh in on some of this, you know, technicalities, and some people say that that might be unfair, and I get what Chair Mello was talking about, who harms, but we're at this level here, where we have public funds to give to an entity, and the entity is the boots-on-the-ground part. And the person that's boots-on-the-ground has a responsibility of knowing what right is like. A person may have the heart to be in the NFL, but if they don't practice, if they don't do the work to be in the NFL, and they show up on the NFL field, they're not going to be very effective. So we have these rules here to make sure that that nonprofit is squared away, that their nonprofit status doesn't go away. That's why 990s are very important. Part of the process of making sure that they're ready to go is to have that mentor, to have the coach, maybe at the county level. Because I, I know it for sure, I didn't know how, I've ran nonprofits, I didn't know I had a mentor that helped me get my 990s on May 31st every year. Also on audits and everything else like that. So nonprofits do have some responsibility to do the right thing when it comes to accepting government money, or accepting money from a business. Everybody has rules, and they're there for a reason. They're not there to make it harder for you to deliver the services. It's there to make sure that you're going to stick around and do those services in the community. It's unfortunate that Safe Streets isn't on, that, what I heard from you, Director Moss, is that the financial risk assessment wasn't part of the the low score, or was, wasn't, it wasn't a determining factor of it falling below the mark.
Yeah, I can't say how much of a factor it was, but they were fully scored by all five reviewers. So it wasn't, to Councilmember Campbell's concern, it wasn't stopped at some point, or they didn't receive zeros in any area.
What is the totality of the, of everything? So maybe the financial risk assessment wasn't there?
I'm sorry, ask that again?
I said, you, you talked about the totality of the scoring.
Yeah.
The financial risk assessment, that is part of the totality of the scoring?
Correct.
So we need to, we're going to, we need to move on. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. Just quickly, I just want to make a point that there are lobbyists for nonprofits, so it's not like they are without the ability to get help and information on, on doing more. That, that's all. Thank you.
First chair, Campbell.
Thank you, Chair, and just to kind of conclude this. Thank you very much for your work on this, Director Moss, and bring this back. I would say with Dave Merle's point that he made, where he didn't get the bid, and I thought he'd catch him, the loser in that is the taxpayer. Ms. Merle's company was fully qualified and forgot one piece of paper, and the next bidder was 20% higher, we paid 20% more for something than we should have, in our best interest, to make sure we have the best pool. So that, that, that would be my suggestion there, just, I, I think you understand where we're all at. And again, I just want to thank you for your work on this.
Thank you. The, the department works so hard juggling so many different priorities, populations, organizations who are at different levels of capacity, and so many demands on the department's time, and led very ably by Director Boss. And in, in this case, I think we fell short. And in this case, I think we owe it to the, to Safe Streets to have a more fair shot at it. So I'm hearing from a majority of council that we will ask the department to reissue this RFP as quickly as possible. And I will ask Ms. Long to counsel the, the counsel on the process to, to do that. We don't do that very often at all. We take the recommendations from the department incredibly seriously, and usually approve them. In this case, for all the reasons stated, it, this, I think this is where the council's going to head. So do we need to make a formal action, or send a letter to the department, or this conversation with the department? What, what's contemplated for, for this?
I think it would be helpful, maybe a letter, I think would be sufficient. I don't think any more formal process would be required, but a letter would be something in writing and traceable that-
And we could put in our budget, you know, we do not anticipate releasing the funds as enumerated in the budget. We would, we will correct, rectify this in the budget. But I think the point of having this conversation now is not waiting to November 21st, when the council adopts the county budget. We wanted to have this conversation early, so that the, as, as early as, as was reasonable, so the department could start putting into place what, what they might need to put into place.
Right, exactly.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see any other questions here. Thank you, Director Moss. We are, I don't have any other items for Chair's topics today. We move into two more budget retreats, Wednesday, tomorrow, and Thursday. And look forward to continuing developing the county budget with, with my colleagues. Under other business, apologies that our team had to wait here. You all are very busy, but we wanted to recognize some of our Office of the County Council team members who have been doing extraordinary work, and have been doing extraordinary work for a very long time, on behalf of the Office of the County Council and the public. Many of them will be recognized at the employee banquet tomorrow evening, and will have the opportunity to do that. Some folks had to leave because they couldn't wait for the entire discussion here. But we do want to recognize a few folks, Priscilla Martinez, for 10 years of great public service to the Office of the County Council. We have a beautiful certificate here for you. It's in this beautiful envelope, because it's a beautiful certificate. Priscilla, we have, for members' information, we have five of our staff members to recognize, our team members to recognize, three that are, that are here, but we'll speak to all of them just briefly. Many of us know that Priscilla is the glue that keeps this place running, right? Invoices don't get paid without Priscilla, technology doesn't get, doesn't happen without Priscilla, and countless, countless operations issues to keep this entire office moving. Our financial statements, our financial analysis, I mean, the, the, the number of tasks that Priscilla is responsible for is, is really astounding. And really, you hold so much knowledge and so much process to, to make this place operate, that it just would not operate without you. So, thank you. Annette Swilly, Councilmember Hitchens, council assistant, had to get back to her office. She was in chambers earlier, but Annette has also been with the county for 10 years, and the Office of the County Council for 10 years. I'm sure Councilmember Hitchens would be able to say remarks much more eloquently than I, but many of us, all of us get to work with Annette, and her exceptional service, especially to Councilmember Hitchens' office and the constituents of District 6. Councilmember Cooper, you were a staff member before you were an elected council member. But through all of your service, you've accumulated 10 years of service to the people of Pierce County, and to the county council. So we too have a certificate here. And then we have two other staff members, both who are being recognized for 30, excuse me, one for 30, the other for 35 years of service. Hugh Taylor had to get to another meeting, because our study session ran long. But Hugh Taylor has contributed 30 years of service to Pierce County, many of those years in Planning Public Works. And then most recently, a very long, successful career here at the Office of the County Council. We're deeply grateful to Hugh's competence and leadership, and ability to straddle so many different issue areas, and help us think about how to be productive, and how to move forward. And over, over modern times, especially over the last decade or so, Hugh has stepped into leadership positions in this office numerous times, through leadership transitions in this office. And so he takes on just whatever is asked of him all the time. And we're very grateful to Hugh's service and commitment to our office. Finally, our longest-serving team member, who we will be recognizing at the employee banquet tomorrow, is our very own Clerk of the Council, Denise Johnson, for 35 years of public service. We get to, we get to make a big deal of the, of the 35-year folks tomorrow night. And Executive Dan Meyer and I will be doing that together. And Denise, we just are so grateful for your commitment to all of us. You serve all of us equally, fairly, ably. This place would not run without you. The public would not have access to public information without you and the team that you helped, you helped lead, so. Thank you, Denise. I would just invite my, my colleagues to give one last round of applause. My apologies to the team members who did come into chambers, but had to get back to whatever they had planned for the 1 o'clock hour. Thank you to the team members who were able to make time to be with us, so we can recognize you in person. We're very grateful for your service. We couldn't do our jobs without you. Also, under other business, there is a Veterans Day proclamation being brought forward by several members, scheduled for next Tuesday's council meeting. If anyone has any changes, invite them to get to those members who are bringing that forward. Is there any other business by members in study session, before we enter an executive session and a closed session? Let's see, Ms. Long, Ms. Murray, any other business for council? Ms. Long, are, are we suggested to do the executive session first, and then the closed session?
Yes, and then, following the executive session, we'll return to an open session, adjourned, and then the closed session will be remote.
Thank you. Please proceed about the purpose of the executive session.
Thank you. So this is an executive session authorized by RCW 4231101I. The purpose is to discuss with legal counsel matters of pending or potential litigation to which the county is or may become a party, and to which public knowledge of the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the county. I'm not sure how much time we'll need, I mean, you're familiar with the topic. And so before we go into a closed session, executive session, don't want to confuse the two, Mr. Chair, you'll state the time at which we'll return, and I'll go out and grab the crew.
Not, not this, no, not this one. Let's try, let's come back at 1, let's go until 1:35 for the executive session. So we anticipate coming back at 1:35. We're in recess until 1:35 PM. The time is 1:36 PM. The council needs about 10 more minutes back in its executive session. So we'll be in recess for the purposes of executive session until 1:47 PM. The time is 1:48 PM. The council is back from its executive session. For members' information, we are moving to a closed session over teams. So we are seeing no, seeing no other business before the Pierce County Council and Tuesday's study session. We are adjourned.